Twenty twenty three city council meeting, we're not going to call it to order till Larry has placed himself up here and in his chair.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. With that, we will call this meeting to order at eight thirty-three a.m. Today, we have Gary Jenkins, who will lead us in prayer and pledges, so if you'll please stand.
Good morning, Mayor and city council members and everyone. Please join with me in a word of prayer. Dear Father in heaven, in Jesus's name, we bow before you to say thank you for this day and everything that you have done, are doing, and about to do. We pray that you endow the members of the council with wisdom, understanding, and knowledge to conduct this business of the city in a way that will glorify you and be edifying to all of us who dwell and work in this city. And Father, we put in a special petition. Can you please send some rain and cool down these triple-digit temperatures? And Lord, so that the people will be able to get some relief from the heat. We thank you also for just this day, and I ask you to bless each and every one, in Jesus's name. Amen. Repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
With that, we will move into item three on the agenda, which is proclamations and recognitions. We have no proclamations, but I do want to make sure we make an announcement about the incredible victory our baseball team came home with as national champions for Angelo State University. So I think, not that we weren't already on the map, but certainly we're on the map in the baseball world now, so we want to thank them for all of that energy effort and making heroes out of us. We will move, we will open up the agenda now for public comment. Issues or concerns not on the regular agenda may be raised by the public at this time. Citizens should speak from the podium, address all comments to the Diaz, begin by stating their name and address or single-member district number, and limit their remarks to less than three minutes. Do we have individuals in the audience today who would like to come forward and make public Seeing none, hearing none, we will move on to our consent agenda. I will ask each council member if they'd like to pull something from the consent agenda. I'm going to start with Lucy.
No, ma'am.
Karen.
No, ma'am.
Larry.
No, ma'am.
Harry.
No, ma'am.
Tom.
Nothing to pull.
Tommy.
No, ma'am.
Then may I have a motion for approval of the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
A motion made by Karen, seconded by Harry. Any public comment considering any agenda item at this point on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye. Larry?
Aye.
Karen? Lucy?
Aye.
Tom? Harry? Tommy?
Aye.
Okay. Consent agenda is passed seven zero. We will now move into the regular agenda. Comments regarding items on the regular agenda may be made by the public when each item is discussed as outlined above. Applicants, proponents, and appallants are exempt from the time limit above and instead must limit their remarks to less than five minutes. We will start with item A, which is the overview and update on the I-27 corridor. And today, we have our Porsha Plains president and CEO Lauren Garduno. Lauren, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I'm talking to that, I was told. Okay. Thank you very much, and good morning, everyone. Thank you for having me today and to give you an update on what's been going on with Porsha Plains Corridor and how it relates to San Angelo. And I look forward to making this presentation to you this morning and offer up my time for any questions that you may have throughout the presentation. But my name is Lauren Garduno, and I have, I'm pushing the up button, I'll push the green button. There we go. Up and down. Hey, okay. I have been with the Porsha Plains Alliance since September of this last year, so about nine, 10 months since I came on board. Prior to that, I had spent thirty-five years with the Department of Transportation, Texas, and various leadership positions throughout West Texas, Odessa, Abilene, finally finishing up in Austin and their administration overseeing planning and project development for the state. So, but I live in Abilene and farm and ranch in a South Peter County, Reynolds area, and so, and I do business in San Angelo, so I'm back and forth between San Angelo and Abilene a lot as I, as I can take care of some farm and ranching operations. But here today, I'm here to talk to you about Porsha Plains, some of the things that happened, I'll give you, and I know we have some members that probably need some, probably a briefing on what the history, what the Porsha Plains is and what it's about, and then we're going to kind of narrow in on what's been going on about the last four or five years with the Porsha Plains Alliance. And I'll particularly finish it off by kind of narrowing in what is going on as it relates to the city of San Angelo and in your respective areas. So that is kind of the agenda. But Porsha Plains is a highway transportation corridor that goes all the way from Laredo all the way to, the Porsha Plains portion goes up to Denver. But we actually have, as far as the trade alliance goes, we have two partnering trade organizations called the Heartland Expressway and the Theodore Roosevelt Expressway, and that takes the corridor, the trade corridor, all the way from Laredo all the way to Canada, to the state of Alberta. And so it is, it has been designated as a national highway system, high priority corridor, the Porsha Plains one has, and it is, was created, really, you know, if you think about it, when you think about the NAFTA agreement, after it was signed, and you start talking about, you know, freight, trade, movement of goods from Mexico and Canada with the United States, this corridor was kind of, kind of started to come into play after the creation of NAFTA and the movement of those goods up and down that corridor. But we have seen a dramatic increase in the movement of goods out of Mexico, and as we see, you know, kind of world, world events happening even in the last three or four years, I think we're going to continue to see the possibility of a greater emphasis upon our trading partnership with Mexico, particularly, especially as it relates to Texas and even Canada in the future as it goes into the north. But you're going to hear things that, you know, in the future about nearshoring, you know, and bringing a lot of that, a lot of that stuff that currently is going over in China, that's going to China, you're going to see a lot of that, and all of a sudden be moving into Mexico and Central America, and all of a sudden, it drives the emphasis upon why this transportation corridor is so important and will continue to be so important for us. This is a visual, kind of gives you a picture of kind of where the corridor goes to the Midwestern United States. If you think about it, and we're going to get, talk about this in a minute, as with the last, some of the latest things we've been doing in Texas particularly is the, is a future interstate discussion, and we're going to talk about that in a minute. But if you think about it, a lot of the nation's interstate systems are east-west systems and have been, and that's the reason why, was when the act was signed in the 50s by President Eisenhower, it was about going west, it's about going west, about going west. It's about getting from the east coast to the west coast. And really, there wasn't a lot of movement north and south unless you were driving cattle from, you know, South Texas to the rail yards in Kansas or something. So, so, you know, our, our route parallels the old cattle drives, you know, of the, of the late eighteen hundreds and early nineteen hundreds. And so you kind of can see that there, going right through the breadbasket of the United States. But what has happened was, is after, after NAFTA was signed and the Porsha Plains corridor was created, in the early 2000s, there were five DOTs, state DOTs, that got together and said, let's look at, maybe looking at a management plan of how we would build this corridor out. At the time, the conversation was about a four-lane divided highway. We're not talking about interstate, we're not talking about future interstate, we're just talking about improving a transportation network to four-lane divided standards so that, you know, so that we can move freight and goods up and down the corridor. They actually, those states got together and put a plan together and started to work the plan. And I'll give you an example, New Mexico, they sold bonds in that timeframe, under Governor Richardson and Governor Johnson, they sold bonds, and they built their portion of their Porsha Plains corridor from Clayton to Raton, they upgraded to four-lane standards and got that built. Texas started to work on their plan, and the problem with Texas is, is you have about eleven thousand lane miles of trunk system that Porsha Plains is a part of the trunk systems. And so you're having to compete with eleven thousand lane miles of corridor for that funding, right? Colorado started working theirs, and this was the way the plan looked, as you could see, it just, it was basically our Porsha Plains corridor identified into short-term and midterm and long-term completion programs. If the money would have been there, we would not, you know, today, you know, we'd be talking about something else. But, but what happened was, as you could see, their plan at the time in '04 was about trying to have this thing built out maybe by 2010, 2011, 2012, and we'd be having a different conversation. But this is what happened to us in Texas. From '04 to '08, we were averaging about $140 million per year on our statewide corridors. But that, now, like, keep in mind, that's going over eleven thousand lane miles of highway that you're trying to put that money to. It just doesn't go very far, and it wasn't going very far. But then what happened is, in '08 to basically 2015, Texas, in Texas, the funding just dried up, dried up completely. In fact, if you were, if you were in San Angelo, even sitting in your MPO, working with your MPO, looking for category-two funding in your MPO during that timeframe, San Angelo wasn't getting a lot of money from Texas and the state government to do work within even your city of San Angelo. There just was no money, you know, statewide. In fact, what happened in Texas was, they started bonding, they started toll-anning in Dallas-Fort Worth, in Austin, and Houston, and that's the way that some of those districts were able to continue to build programs out from '08 to 15. While the rest of the state, a lot of us in the rural area, you know, I'm talking about the San Angelos, the Abilenes, the Odessas, and some, and Emmerallos, you know, we just basically didn't have a lot of money to build with. And so the corridor, the corridor build-out definitely went away. You hear, you heard the creation of a new term that came up during that timeframe, and it was, I credit a district engineer up in Childers, Texas, for coming up with this about building a super-twos. We don't have room to build four-lane divided, we don't have the money to build four-lane divided, but maybe with our reduced budget, we can build these passing-lane corridors. And you'll see some exhibits, you'll see some examples of that, like even on 277 going down to Cristobal, you'll see the build-out of what we call super-two highways. They're basically three-lane highways for truck passing, right? It's a cheaper footprint, and that's kind of what Texas started doing with their limited money from basically '08 to 15, you know, trying to at least build some capacity in their system that was continuing to grow. Something happened, though, in 14 and 15. The state of Texas voters passed two propositions. Proposition one, proposition seven. Oil and gas severance on one, sales tax on seven. And what that did for the Texas dot's budget for building and construction, it basically doubled it overnight. So in 2016, Texas dot put $60 million per year program for statewide corridor, I'm talking about, you know, these building, building out our Porsha Plains corridors and stuff, $60 million, that's not a lot of money. That's not a lot of money at all for the whole state. But then overnight, that unified transportation program, there was about 35 billion in your 10-year budget, went from 35 billion to about 75 billion from Prop. 1 and Prop. 7 oil and gas and sales tax revenue. It just, it changed the game. And lo and behold, Texas dot went back and started looking at their, at their corridor again, and they said, we don't, we can afford to spend money in what they call category-four, which is rural and urban corridors, and they started putting money in those corridors. Some of the state was taking advantage of that. I'll give you an example, the I-69 corridor over in East Texas, the Lufkin District, the district engineer in Lufkin, she had, she was a planner at the time, she had actually started the relief route studies off around some of those communities on the 69 corridor. So when the money turned on in 16 and 17, she was at the front of the trough, you know, to go get some of that money because she had done the planning work early and prepared herself for, prepared herself for this influx of money. So you see some projects that got picked up pretty quick because of, because that money became available. And I say that for a key reason. One of our strategies that we are actually focusing on is to make sure that we are doing the planning work now to be in a position to compete for that unified transportation program construction money later, and that's, that's, that's an important, that's going to be an important effort for us. But what that looked like in this unified transportation program, and this is, this is a picture of a slide that Texas dot presented to the Highway Commission about two months, three months ago, updating their program. Now, I told you in 16 and 17, it was, it went to 75 billion? Today, going into August, the commission is going to vote on a unified transportation program that's at $100 billion. Hundred billion dollars, and it's gone up that much in the last six years even. And you can see here that I've highlighted certain categories of funding, that's construction funding, particularly the statewide connectivity rural area, they put $10 billion, that's, that's a hundred million, you know, that's a hundred million a year. And then they got the for you urban connectivity that allows us to do work inside these MPO boundaries, inside San Angelo's MPO boundary on corridors, you know, and they, they've stuck 7.8 billion per year to be distributed throughout the state. But not only that, the commission has actually given us about, you know, $3.5 billion of energy sector money, and San Angelo is in the energy sector. So we have the good fortune of actually having a pretty healthy budget of energy sector money that we can spend to improve our corridors and our highways in the, in the, in the San Angelo region. A lot of that money is distributed by formula, the Permian Basin gets a big chunk of it, 50% of that in fact, because that's where it's being generated from, right? And so you see that, you know, you see that play out there. But the commission also sets aside about $14 billion of that $100 billion to CAT-12, and that's where the commission passes out money as strategic priority projects. A lot of it goes to the Clear Lanes Initiative in the Dallas-Fort Worth, Houston, you know, San Antonio, on these big mega projects, it's a lot of that money's going there. But they have been known to pass out money to some of the rural areas on our, on our corridors, and some of our districts on the Porsha Plains have benefited from category-12 commission strategic priority money. That's important because you have a commissioner in your backyard that, that sits on that commission, and so understanding that right there is important because you know, know that he has an opportunity to help us with, you know, with some of that CAT-12 program also. But I point out one other thing here, a lot of the time people forget about, everybody likes to preach and talk about the $100 billion construction program, everybody's excited about the $100 billion construction program, but there is a below the UTP distribution line down there, that bottom yellow box, that number is $34.2 billion, that's in the 10-year window. Where that money is, is that every two years, when Texas dot goes in front of the legislature and asks for their operating budget, legislative appropriation request operating budget, they budget, not only do they budget some of this construction money in their budget, but they also have to budget planning, engineering, right-of-way, administrative, all that is in that budget. That $34.2 billion is basically five LAR cycles, legislative appropriation cycles, you know, every two years, and that represents all the engineering, all the right-of-way, all the preliminary studies, all that stuff that they're going to have to spend to, to deliver this $100 billion program. And I tell you that because that really, that's, that's the money I'm going after. That's the money I'm interested in. I'm interested in Texas dot putting money out of that $34.2 billion on planning and developing our corridor. And so that's kind of one of our strategies that we're using when we think about it in that way. What's happened the last five years is actually a lot. Texas dot completed a freight mobility plan in 18. At the time, Texas dot was really, you know, just getting into spending their CAT-4 program again, you know, like I said, 18 was about the time that the UTP doubled and we started to see some money. But they, they really hadn't had a focus on, they really didn't have a focus on any of the interstates. I'll just tell you, and I'll tell you because I was there, you know, the focus wasn't on any of the interstates, it was really about just trying to distribute this CAT-4 money across all these corridors statewide. So they, we did a study on freight mobility plan, but then later, there was a, there was a possible recommendation out of that freight mobility plan to do an I-27 extension. Now, that was, that was Texas dot-driven at the time, that particular recommendation was Texas dot-driven, and it started to kind of generate some interest about the idea of possible future interstate. But really, it wasn't, it was just an interest by Texas dot, it really got pushed over the goal line by Senator Perry. You know, Senator Perry up in Lubbock is the one that actually wrote a bill, and it was, and it was signed by Perry, and it was, and represented for price up in the Emmeral region. They put the bill in place, a House Bill 1079, that actually told Texas dot, no, don't just think about this study, Texas dot, do the study. Let's see what the economic benefits would be if we actually did do a future interstate in Texas, on the western side of Texas. And they did. They put a study in place, came up with the results, and this was kind of an idea of the, of the study area that we were looking at, it basically followed the Porsha Plains corridor from Laredo out of, Laredo up through, you know, northern Panhandle. You can see we have two splits on our corridor today, we have the split Sterling City, that goes to Midland-Odessa and comes back together at La Mesa, and then the other, the other segment goes up through Big Spring. We also have the split at Dumas, and one segment goes over to New Mexico, and then the other segment goes north up to, up into Oklahoma. Ideally, that segment, it goes into the eastern range of Colorado. Our goal is to take it to Lyman, Colorado, because that's where the Porsha Plains corridor is, and it will end in, you know, it would end on I-76 there at Lyman. However, Texas dot can't study future interstate in Colorado, they can't study future interstate in New Mexico, they can only study future interstate in Texas, so that's kind of why that study limit was there. But these are the numbers. These, these numbers showed, you know, it kind of woke everybody up, they said, you know what, if we can get an interstate built in Texas over here, there's a lot of value. Benefit ratio, cost ratio was plus, there's a 17.
Talk about the cost ratio, because that's an important element that really is what we're going to build aggressively on.
Yeah, sure, Mayor, so anytime you're over 1.0, it's telling you that whatever dollar you invest in, you intend, you'll get that plus back, right? And y'all understand that, and so, so now we're talking about, and the cost to build our interstate in Texas is going to be about $26 billion, 26 billion. It's a lot of money, but if you can get it built, it's going to bring back a 2.4-plus on $26 billion to your, to the state of Texas, right?
That's huge.
It's a big number. And then the GDP, 17.8 billion increase on your GDP. So we're talking, you know, so our economic development corp, our cities, our counties, our businesses, you know, it just will continue to have that kind of an impact. There are job creation with this as we build out. You have actually, you have a local contractor that's a member of our alliance, Reese Albert, they've been one of the founding members of this, of this, and they stand to benefit by building out this corridor with us. And so we just have a, we just have a wonderful opportunity. And what this really did more than anything, though, folks, is what this did was, is it turned Texas dot's eye towards, we're no longer going to put it off on the, you know, as just a kind of a, as a passive thing, we're going to actively look at possibly seeing what we can do to build this corridor out. It changed, it changed the game.
Yeah, explain that, because what it did, creating 1079, forced a consultant group to be employed.
It did.
And to study the entire corridor and prove up the numbers that you've just said.
It did.
So they no longer could say, we don't know if it benefits us. The consultant group proved that it would benefit the state of Texas.
It did.
And that has been a key element in terms of being able to push this forward.
Yeah, and I add, and I add to that, Mayor, what has also done for us with Texas dot is, Texas dot has several, several designated, you know, legislative designated committees that oversee certain programs that they're responsible for overseeing, including the one that we're going to talk about at the end of this presentation, which is the I-27 Advisory Committee that was created under a different bill, which actually, it's our, it's our committee for our corridor. But we have a Border Trade Advisory Committee, we have a Freight Multimodal Committee, we have, we have the I-27 Advisory Committee. All those committees, what's interesting is, is now the Porsha Plains corridor is being integrated into every one of those committees, you know, the Border Trade, and that's important for us because, because, you know, if you get the Border Trade Advisory Committee that's dealing with the districts along the border, if you get them talking about Porsha Plains, you know, in their, in their meetings, and in their investments, and in their, their management plan, then that's just one other, that's just one other program that Texas dot is managing that, that we, we take advantage of and have the benefit from. The Freight Advisory Committee, they got, Texas DOT, like ever, all 49, 50 DOTs have to put together a freight plan for the federal government, and that freight plan has to say, this is, these are the corridors, this is what we're working on, and it's important that we are integrated into that, that national freight plan too, which we are, and Texas dot has picked that up on us too. So, so that's a key, that's a key thing for us, it has been a key thing for us. And with that being said, Senate Bill 1474, they did, they did create an Interstate 27 Advisory Committee. And I will say this, that Porsha Plains was very influential in how that committee, how that, that language looked in the creation of that committee. So there's your, there's your alliance working for you, trying to make sure that we get the representation that we need out of our cities and county governments that are all up and down this corridor. And you can see there that it's, it's made up of county judges, have been identified on the Porsha Plains corridor, but it's also includes some of our big cities, our major cities. San Angelo, of course, I've highlighted there is one of them. Your mayor sits on that I-27 Advisory Committee, you know, as your representation for, and it meets twice a year, meets twice a year, and it is interacting with Texas dot on project recommendations for projects on this corridor as they, as they develop their plan. This is kind of a visual, and Tom Green County, the county is, actually has a seat on it. So it's important for the, for our county judge to understand that too, that, that you have a voice that's been written into this bill on this advisory committee that gives you access to Texas dot and to the direction that they're going when they try to look at future, the future interstate up and down our corridor. But it also, not only that, it includes three members who are economic development professionals. And you have, and I appreciate the involvement of your local economic development, you've, he's engaged with that, and that's, that's a good thing. And another thing is, is a, there's another, there's another group, a committee called Multimodal, Texas dot runs a multimodal program, and so we're talking about not only the highway that is, that is up and down the 27 Highway, Future 27, but we're also talking about how do other transportation linkages come into it. And you're, you sit in a, in a, in a very strategic location because you've got the, you know, a Texas dot-owned railroad that runs through your community going down into the Presidio region. And why is that important? Because one of our big economic generators on our corridor is the cattle industry. It's a big player and will continue to be a big player. And as we continue to develop our trade relationships with Mexico, I've been having conversations with some of the large cattle feeders up in the Panhandle, and my question to them is, where's, where's your cattle coming from, from Mexico? I know where it's coming from in the United States. Interesting enough, it comes from the south, southern United States, and they're bringing it across, a lot of it's coming up 287, skipping us and going over to the Panhandle, you know, through the Dallas-Fort Worth region, you know, that way. But as we build this corridor and improve even I-14 across South Texas, who knows, we may change that model on how that cattle travels through Texas into the Texas Panhandle. But Mexican cattle right now today currently is traveling through the Port of Santa Teresa in New, in New Mexico, south of Las Cruces, a lot of it's coming up that way. And so I'm telling you all this is, as we develop our future interstate down to Laredo, Del Rio, and Eagle Pass, maybe we can change that model. Now, I realize politics in Mexico may drive a little bit where that crossing happens, but at least maybe we can change that model enough to get, to get them to start thinking about taking our corridor, and cattle's a big player. It's a big player in this discussion. So they have a seat at the table when it comes to how we build this thing out.
But that railroad coming out Presidio is hugely important because, in fact, many of the agricultural businesses in Mexico lose 30% of their crop while they're in a truck waiting to cross the border. So it's very congested, it's expensive, and opening that, that bridge would dynamically change the cost of operation for the agricultural industry.
I agree completely, I agree completely. Just a side note, I've had a wild hair idea about how we could develop that railroad down Alpine South, we need to form a dinner train and have like a Orient, murder on the Orient Express kind of, that's floating in my head, anyway. So, you know, provide, provide some tourism down there, and another use of the railroad, right? If you can get another use for it, generate, building it out, right?
So you could do that from Fort Stockton to your.
We could, yeah. So anyway, I've got this murder on the Orient dinner party.
I was just hearing a Knives Out story coming out.
Yeah, yeah, anyway. That was one of my wild-headed ideas I had about that railroad a few years, a few years ago, but anyway.
But go east, north and east to San Angelo.
Okay. Anyway, and see, you can, you can, you can recruit the Angelo State, the students, the liberal arts program, they can be your, you know, they can put your program together. You know, you got, there's all kinds of potential there, y'all can do it.
Well, you know, Texas Pacifico is headed here in San Angelo.
Correct, that's correct. So who says you have to go down to Alpine to have, to have a tourism spot? You can do it in San Angelo, can't you? So hey, there's my idea, you can have it, it's free, there you go. I bring this slide up because this was the recommendation from the 27 committees, you can't read that very well, I'm sorry, but you'll have a copy of this presentation, you can look at it later, and you can actually look at this report, we can make this report available to you, but I highlight on that committee implementation plan, the key you see there is short-term, midterm, and long-term recommendations on those projects. I say that because I showed you some slides earlier in this deck that talked about in '04 how these five DOTs had a short-term, midterm, long-term plan. It's always interesting when we start talking about short-term, midterm, long-term plan, what gets lost in the short-term, midterm, long-term, right? It gets lost in it. So we are, we will, we will take the recommendations, and this is public, this is the public involvement recommendations of, you know, basically you guys, you know, that submitted, you know, this is what we think should be built out, and we've brought, and they've broken it into three types of projects, they've broken it into interstate upgrades between cities, relief routes, or, or, you know, through routes even, because in some of these cities you don't have to go around it, you might be able to develop through it in a way, and then, and then safety operational improvements. And some of those, and I'm telling you that three areas, it's important because, remember that slide that showed the UTP and had all those that slide that showed the UTP and had all those categories of funding? There was a safety category, you know, there's a bridge category. Doesn't mean that we have to just go into corridor money or into commission strategic priority money to build your Portus to Plains corridor. We're going to look at all that.
But also, we need to explain the following, and that is, is that you won't go from two-lane with a passing lane to four-lane interstate. You go from one to the next step up to the next step up. So there would be work being done to upgrade to get to interstate quality in terms of the entire corridor, but it would happen in steps.
Yeah, so I'll give you a visual how that might look. You know, San Angelo District is doing a lot of Super 2 upgrades on some corridors, safety for reasons. 137, for example, going down to Big Lake, they've, they've got that whole corridor nearly identified for a Super 2 upgrade. I drove 277 in, you know, yesterday, and we've got some Super 2 being built just south of, just north of town, right? Cristobal, Martsen Highway, that was, that's a Super 2, you know, some of that, 67 is a, is Super 2. So what, what you will see is, is that TechDOT's going to have to make operational improvements and rehabilitation improvements to their highways, and they're going to have to continue to do that, and they got funding to do that. They got maintenance rehab type funding to do that, and they can do some Super 2 work even in that. But in the meantime, we are going to work with TechDOT to go after the planning dollars at 34 billion below the line to actually start looking at feasibility and right-of-way needs and controlled access on these corridors to get them where we can actually buy right-of-way for a future interstate standard. And, and then TechDOT, as, then as they, they continue to develop out that corridor, then they can start looking at doing a project that gets it to interstate standard. So that's the process and the step that, that we will, that we'll continue to look at. What does that, what does that look like in, you know, how would that look like in San So our game plan really, for us to be able to put an interstate, a future, an interstate placard on our highway, it has to be integrated, it has to be upgraded to interstate standard connected to an existing interstate. Does that make sense? So where do you, the closest interstate you have, and I always, I always fascinated about San Angelo with this because my whole career with TechDOT in West Texas, if you drive I-20 and you drive I-10, we got, we got all this, we got a lot of good signage that says San Angelo, right? San Angelo, there's San Angelo exit signs everywhere, Colorado City, Abilene, you know, even back into the east, the Eastland area, there's signs, you know, signs to get you to San Angelo. And I thought, man, San Angelo's done a pretty good job of getting their name, you know, on a sign, on interstate sign on 10 and 20 for a city that has no interstate, you know, that runs, that runs through it. It's pretty impressive, actually. But what we'll do is, is, is we'll work at, we are, you know, I've already having conversations with districts, is we'll work at getting Big Spring, for example, interstate standard on 87 South up to interstate standard, and it may not take as much because of where they're at already. We're going to work at Sonora, trying to work north on 277 to bring that, that corridor up to interstate standard so that we can actually start signing the interstate as we get those segments, those logical terminized segments, you know, completed, we can start signing Interstate 27, you know, to, to San Angelo. So I can't start in San Angelo even though we might get the relief route built first here, and that's okay because you can get it built and you can do what with it? You can economically develop it. You know, you can get your relief route built and you, and build it to interstate standard, and you can start economically developing it. It's kind of like when the Houston Heart was finished, what did that do for your, 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 your city, you know, when you got it built? You can do the same thing here, just we can't put a 27 sign on it until I connect you to 10 or 20, you know, from either San Angelo or from, either from Big Spring or from, from Sonora. And we'll do that, we'll start working that, and that'll be our game plan to try to bring the interstate to you so we can get those signs in place. That make sense? Questions or thoughts on that?
Yes.
Oh, none? Okay.
Go ahead, Lucy.
What years are we talking about?
ASAP.
Good question, Lucy, it's a good question, because I'm going to be 60 years old next March, so I'm thinking, okay, how long am I going to do this? $26 billion, I think it's going to take me 20 years to get the whole interstate built. 20 years is my number. I'd like to have.
Built out to interstate.
That's the whole thing.
Standards. That does not mean improvements.
That's correct.
Along the way to get us there.
That is correct.
So you will see an improved corridor along the way that should open up the trade from Mexico coming north because you will have an improved corridor.
That is correct. And I've got a, I've got a 10-year window in my head too, Commissioner, that Councilwoman that is a, is a, you know, I like to see some things get, you know, and particularly I like to see some, some relief routes get built so that the cities can actually be developing them today instead of tomorrow, right? And then I will tell you, it looks like TechDOT's going to throw a lot of money at our corridor from Laredo to Eagle Pass to Del Rio. They're going to throw, all the way up, all the way up to Sonora. They're going to throw a lot of money at it.
And that's key.
And they, and they've picked it up as, and I've, and I've kind of, I don't know if I've highlighted in this presentation, I'm going to Del Rio in a couple of weeks, and I have highlighted in that one. They're, they're going to put a lot of money on that portion of the corridor because, because I think we can actually sell it also as a, as a dual purpose, not only interstate, but it also is going to help them with their border security issues. It's going to help them, I mean, it's going to help a lot. And when you have a full controlled access interstate that runs parallel to the border for 115 miles, you can do a lot of things with that. Your fencing, your, your controlled access, your fiber, your, your technology improvements and upgrades, you're going to be able to do a whole lot of stuff in that, in that. So we think we'll get that built. I think in the next five, six years, I'll get a lot of that built.
And that's key.
Yep.
Because that's the worst part of this entire corridor. It is the worst roads, it's the biggest problem, it's, the conditions are terrible, the geography is terrible for, for doing this. So if we don't get it done first, the rest will be challenged. Well, I mean, it's the key, it's the key.
And if you look at this picture, this is the, how we, in the last two years, there's been a lot of activity with our Portus to Plains group. We've actually been able to get congressionally designated future interstate, that's at the federal level. This year, a big win is we were actually putting numbers on it, and we had little hiccups on what that numbering system needed to look like, but we've gotten through that, I think, because we have splits, right? It's kind of like the Dallas-Fort Worth, you know, those two, those two cities, they want to be alone, they want to be, we're Dallas, you're Fort Worth, Fort Worth. If you remember, oh, Amon Carter, he didn't really care for Dallas, never did. And, and so you have that history there. But, so just like the 35 corridor, we have a 35 East and a 35 West, we'll have a 27 corridor, they'll have a 27 East and a 27 West. For you, it doesn't matter because it's 27. It's 27 through San Angelo, you know, when it gets to you here, and it'll be 27 North up to Dumas where we split it again. We'll take the 27 designation over to Raton. The reason why is because we just do not know for sure if Colorado DOT is going to play with us on a future interstate. I've got to spend some time in Colorado convincing the DOT officials of the value of having this interstate on the eastern range. Right now, that particular mindset is, is they don't want to build any additional lanes in Colorado. We want to go public transportation on Colorado Springs and Denver. It's just a whole mindset that we're going to have to have some conversations with. I would point out, there's an article just in two, the last two weeks about the value of having multiple interstates running through your system, especially like on I-95 in Pennsylvania when the, when the deck went down and it got burnt up. And I just read an article this last week about the value of having to, really, for freight movement, we're not going to see that much of a hindrance on our 95 corridor because they, they mentioned two other interstates that run pretty much parallel to, to, to the 95. So if I can get Denver to see that article and understand that, then there's value for us putting this interstate on the eastern range, you know, going up to, at least going up to Denver. And a lot of this traffic, quite frankly, you know, I'm selling TechDOT as, and Chairman Bug, is, you know, he's a congestion, he's a congestion man, rightly so. The governor has told him to, you know, fix the congestion in these big cities. But, you know, we can show him where, we can take your truck traffic from Laredo out of San Antonio that wants to go west on 10, either to Denver or to California, and there's a lot of it that does, we can, we can take it this way.
Commissioner New is very focused on safety because he heads up the safety committee.
He does.
On the Transportation Commission or Committee.
He really does.
Yeah.
Recent work, Portus to Plains has been able to do for you is the, what we call the old earmark program that was dead in 2009, 2010, got his turned back on. There's new rules associated with it, there's a lot more restrictions associated with it, which is fine. It got it, so that way it's not pork barrel, it's, you know, it's, it's pretty good. It's called community project funding. Your Congressman Fluger did submit, we submitted for a project that actually is, was a, it was a funded project, it was already funded. But here's the value of that. It's on one of your, it's on your highway out here north of town on 67, on 277, construction project, and it's about, it's about a 15, 16, 17 million dollar project that was already funded by TechDOT and I think your NPO, but we were able to get an additional $3 million out of Congressman Fluger to put on that project. And why? That's three, that frees up $3 million in your NPO with TechDOT that they can actually redistribute in your, in your, in your area. So we are going to continue to ask our federal congressional delegations for that kind of money because that's in, out of the federal highway bill, that's not coming back to TechDOT as a formula. You know, they, they get their formula money. That $100 billion that I told you in UTP, about 35% of that is formula distributed by federal gas tax money back in. So they, that's about 35, 35 billion of it is that federal gas tax money. But, but, federal government is still holding billions and billions of dollars in their, in their highway bill that's discretionary. That if, that if we don't ask for it, we don't get it on our corridor, then it goes to the east coast, it goes to California, it goes wherever the current administration wants to put it, you know, in their programs. So we're going to continue to ask for that money to get it back to our communities in Texas where it needs to be. And we, and this is just one request, we, we actually received quite, we, we got quite a bit of it up and down the corridor, which is good. We're also asking for planning dollars. And this is something that I'm, to educate y'all on, when you're, when Fluger in the office, you know, when, and Fluger was pretty open to it, Arrington and Lubbock is pretty open to it. When you get down to South Texas, some of those, you know, those senators and delegates, they, they like to put the money on the construction because they can see it, you can see it. But we're trying to educate them, say, hey, listen, if you, if you turn me loose on the planning, then when, then when you guys call for your, your future federal dollar and you want, and you got that short window, you shovel-ready, you may have heard the term shovel-ready? If you hear that term, it's because, you know, the project has to be ready to be built. We can then give you some shovel-ready projects because we've done all the planning, we've secured all the right-of-way, we've set, you know, we've set aside the program, you know, we've cleared the environmental. That's a, you know, that's a two or three-year process, just clearing environmental on some of this. So, so that, that's a big deal. And we will continue to, like I said, work on upgrading the interstate from Sonora North and from Big Spring South to San Angelo, as I mentioned earlier. These are some TechDOT slides that Chris Cowan gave to the I-27 Advisory Committee, show some of the existing construction as the mayor mentioned, you know, we're not going to just not do anything on the corridor, there's future construction projects, there's safety and operational, anything that's got an orange on that orange tab, you know, they got a, that's under construction. But anything that's got a purple there on that slide, that's future plan. That's, that's, that's planning work. And you can see number six and number seven, we need to solve our relief route around San Angelo, what does that look like? And number seven is the relief route around Sonora, what does that look like? You know, we, we've got to do some planning work there. So anything that you see in the purple, that represents, that's planning dollars that we're going after to try to build this program out. That's my presentation. Open for questions if you have any.
I have questions for Lauren. Yes, yes, Tom.
So if you've traveled I-35, you know, it's just brutal. I mean, I would do anything to avoid driving on I-35, even if I'm going the course of Canada from here. I mean, it's Gazefield, it's 514, it's a pretty drive. So how much of this, when you talk about the cost to benefit ratio is 2.4, how much of that are we robbing Peter to pay Paul? It's already there. Are we taking it off I-35 and I-35 will see that? Or is this organic growth we're going to see over here on the west side of it?
Well, it's a good question. And I, and I, and to answer that, it, it's, it's additional growth. And here's the reason why, because the TechDOT Commission will, will preach this at you too. They say Texas is, Texas is growing by 1,000 people a day. 30,000 people a month are coming into this state. And so, so we.
Just so you know, we want that border to go all the way around the state.
We do. Yeah, we do. And so there's anticipated, you know, there's, first of all, if they, if they don't fix the 35 situation, because, because we all know there, there are people who want to live, you know, so many miles off of 35, right? Like 80, 70, let's see, what's the number? It's like, it's like about 90% of our population is like east of 35, right? 10% is west. But that model's changed a little bit, and it's going to change particularly for our southern segment, and then, and then our Permian Basin segment. And, and it even shows the 2050 model, that cities like San Angelo and Amarillo and Lubbock, what I call our oasises in the west, they're going to, they're going to grow. They're going to be significant growth. And so I, I think, so the number itself was not robbing off an existing program per se. It's anticipated that our growth in our state's going to be that much that it, that we, we need to accommodate it with this, this corridor.
We talk about it in the following sense, and one is called national security. And so that's been an important part of the conversation as we've worked on this corridor because we do provide the food, fuel, and fiber, not only for the nation but internationally. And as more product is moved from China to Mexico, there's going to be more coming up from the south to the north, and it makes it even more important. We always talk about the following, you can invest $8 billion on I-35 and you still don't correct the congestion because it just continues to get congested. The only way you can relieve congestion is to get a lot of the freight moving off of I-35 over to this new corridor. It's 600 miles between Interstate 35 and this new corridor, 600 miles. There's no transportation north and south, that's 600 miles. And so that becomes a really important part of it. And we also know that in fact, the, one of the, as Drew Darby says, it's pretty hard, the accident rate, the death rate on I-35 is smaller because you're standing still. If you're on, you're around Midland, Odessa, and San Angelo, which are in the high priority quarters because of the energy industry and your two-lane highways, you got 18-wheelers coming at each other on two-lane highways, so the death is a huge issue. Tremendous amount of accidents because of two-lane highways. And Alvin is really focusing on that because that is his new responsibility on the commission. So for all those reasons, that is our strategy in terms of how we talk about it, safety.
How do we prioritize the funding? I mean, we're here for, we're all elected here to go San Angelo.
Right.
You know, I've been in TML meetings and listened to Midland, Odessa, and them on this Portus to Plain, and, and, you know, they were certainly not favorable about it coming through Angelo, they wanted to spark it off and go west.
Right.
And avoid it, but, so if you look at that priority of, like you said, that 32, 34 billion you had that was flexible, what prioritizes your opinion on where that money gets spent? Because I noticed on your segments, you had them colored, you know, north to south, 1, 2, 3, and 4. Is that high priority?
No, it's not. It's just, it's just the nomenclature of numbers.
We were four and I was like, oh.
Yeah, no, it just, they just started up there and they just numbered them that way.
In fact, the entire committee determined priority 1, 2, 3, and 4.
Yeah, and so the I-27 Advisory Committee has a voice in that, how that priority happens. And they're, and currently TechDOT is going through listing sessions with, with public on how to, what would be some of the criteria to prioritize these projects. And we all were able to give some feedback into it. My recommendation, for example, will be, you know, you look at short-term, midterm, long-term, you know, my, my thinking is, is let's go look at anything that needs a long lead time, like relief routes or whatever, let's get some of that planning in the short term, you know, let's start that planning there for now. Um, I, 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 I would probably, I would look at relief routes for economic development, but then I would also start taking a look at those segments of the interstate upgrade that go from, you know, existing interstates to, and, and I think that will drive the priority a little bit.
Well, for example, you have, um, Big Spring, which is already working on their reliever route on the east side of Big Spring. So they're using M P O monies from multiple, because they have Abilene, Big Spring and some, all right, so they're combining those monies and they're working on their reliever route on the east side. Lubbock has got the money to do their loop on the west side, which will connect north of Lubbock down to south of Lubbock. We are working on our reliever route. So each of us in various areas are doing our part to start the process, not waiting for the main corridor, but doing the parts that will connect it ultimately. So there's work, when we say ten years, there's work being done this year, next year and the next year on these projects.
There are certain projects that are going to drive driver behavior too. I'll give you an example, Amarillo up there on their loop. You know, we're working with Blair, the district engineer, to try to get direct connects off of existing twenty-seven south between Canyon and Amarillo, get those direct connects on the loop so that, that, that truck driver all of a sudden makes a decision, I'm not going to run my truck right through downtown Amarillo, which is a nightmare on twenty-seven, going in, you know, terminates there at their new ball field or whatever, you know. But I'm going to, but once we get the direct connects built on the north and south side of that loop, all of a sudden the truck, it's, it's feasible for that trucker to, to make that, you know, make that decision to choose that. It's happened in Big Spring too. As we've improved the signage for that, you know, on that relief route, uh, now all of a sudden truck traffic is starting to take that route instead of, you know, instead of going through eighty-seven through downtown, you know, Greg Street. So, so that's, those, those are going to be some of the priorities, I think, that will drive, you know, what gets built.
And interestingly enough, until we start this ten seventy-nine, um, study, many people in, in major positions in text dot didn't even realize that I twenty-seven went through downtown Amarillo. When we took them up there and showed them that you, I twenty-seven actually goes through the middle of Amarillo, they were like, how did that happen? So we weren't even a focus. We weren't even important enough for someone to look at that and say, how did that happen? So we've opened tremendous amount of eyes and focus on this corridor that until ten seventy-nine was passed was not really a conversation, meaningful conversation.
And the model for us too, just so you understand, is when you start looking at freight movement by dollar volume, sometimes we don't see the large dollar volume on our corridor because we're not moving automobile parts or technology. You know, that's going California way, you'll see that, or it's going up to Illinois, right? You'll see that on those corridors. However, when you start looking at truck volume by, by commodities, uh, all of a sudden we become a serious contender in terms of the, the way we're going to feed the world. The food, fiber and fuel discussion, we understand the fuel discussion, we understand where that's coming from. But the, the fiber, you know, forty percent of the nation's cotton is in the Panhandle, forty percent of the nation's cotton. Today it goes by truck to Fort Worth rail yards, it gets on a rail and it comes right back through Lubbock on the way to Long Beach, California to get on a ship to get to China.
You have to go north to go south.
So as Mausolon, as Mexico continues to build their corridor, and they are, they're, they're improving their corridor from Eagle Pass, Laredo on the Mausolon to Mausolon, as they continue to do those improvements, all of a sudden our cotton, our cotton growers association says, you know what, it's, it's cheaper for us, more beneficial for us, even while we're still dealing with China, to run it down our corridor south, go into Mausolon's port and go out that way. And then in the future, as I mentioned nearshoring in the beginning of my presentation, who knows, maybe the future, you know, jeans and shirts are not being made in China, they're being made in Mexico or Central America, and they're going down that way anyway, right?
Same thing with the cattle industry, what part does?
Twelve of the nation's top twenty feedlots, twelve of the nation's top twenty feedlots are on our corridor. You know, and that gets us into the Heartland Expressway and up that way too, but it's on our corridor. Uh, three of the nation, in twenty twenty-two, three of the top six agricultural exports in our nation was cotton, dairy and cattle. Three of the top six. We have most, we're getting, we're getting a bulk of the nation's dairy, and we're getting, I've already told you the numbers on the cotton, and, and, and we've got, we've got the bulk of the nation's cattle sitting on our corridor. And you can't, I tell people, you can't pipeline that cow. You can pipeline that oil and gas product, but you just can't pipeline that cow, so.
And the other part of this study, which is amazing, is that statistically, those numbers had not been brought forward and put out there before. So by forcing this consultant group to be hired, they spent, amazing how quickly, how much work they put into this thing, proved up and produced these statistics that really no one had talked about ever.
And just, and just a side note, you know, just some things that I'm interested in too, is you have bases at Del Rio, San Angelo, Abilene, Wichita Falls on the two seventy-seven corridor. I think at some point, some down the road, I'm going to have some conversation with your Department of Defense about the history of our western forts, one, two, our existing bases, two, for, you know, for today, because I think, I think there could be some potential for us to be tapping into a funding pot at federal level that's not just transportation. But it could be, it could be defend, our defense budget in terms of what we do with our, this corridor.
Again, the national security issue attached to that.
And that too.
And we remind everybody that Eisenhower, when he created the, the interstate east and west, they didn't base the location of that on population. They base it off of the most direct, easiest route to go east to west. And so when we're challenged about the population of, for example, our corridor versus the I thirty-five corridor, we remind everyone that Eisenhower didn't base it off of population, but the ease of transportation, the fastest route, quickest route.
There was a, and there was a military in that act too.
That's right. That was key.
So, yeah, so we'll, we'll tap into that.
I have one final question on this one, and maybe this is the question I get, you know, as we sit here and look, we just want to know where it's going to be in San Angelo and Tom Green County. I mean, there's a ton of people that would be prepared to do development and, you know, at this point they're like, we think we know how it's going to go San Angelo? But nobody, I mean, when you can define that, then there's going to be a lot of money played and a lot of investment here. So is it hard for the plan to say the route's going to cut off at Great Creek or where and it's going to go right around here? There's a lot of people prepared to make economic investment.
Yeah, it's the reason we're asking for planning money because we don't, we can't designate that till we've been given the planning money to officially figure that out.
Your current study, Chris Cowan and the district, you know, with the M P O, y'all have got a study going on about potential relief route around, you know, on the west, on the east side coming around to the north, right? And, uh, and that part, some of that study's funded, but, but, but we, you know, I think we will continue to ask Austin to give Chris even more money to look at what it would be like to bring that up to future interstate standards. Bring it, and, and if that becomes the route that everybody's happy in San Angelo with having, then, uh, then we can identify that now today and get that planning identified. And that way then your developers can say, okay, now it's, now we know where it's coming, we can do something with it. It's a good question.
And we are pushing at the M P O level.
And it does need to happen.
Well, I mean, it's the most common question, I don't know about all the y'all up here, but everybody's like, where's that route going to go?
And we don't know.
And we do know, and, you know, our route is going to go two seventy-seven south. So we know we have to figure out this thing around San Angelo to get it back to two seventy-seven south, right? Because we know it's going that way on our, on our corridor. Granted, uh, you know, text dot hasn't, they have these key strategic highway corridors, they, they've got four or five of them across the state. And what that is, is that's their way of spending some of that gap four money back in, you know, when I told you back in oh four, when the trunk system money dried up, you know, now they've, they've identified five or six of these corridors in sixteen, seventeen to start spending in. We've got most of our route on with those key, one of those key corridors. But their money that they're spending is just to get it to a four lane divided highway. So it's our job then to work with the districts to say, listen, do your planning work for a future interstate upgrade, which includes controlled access issues, includes the right of way path, the width, it'll include, you know, whatever, great separations, you know, do your planning studies for that, even though we know text out is going to give you maybe some money just to build it to a four lane divided standard, that intermittent build, so to speak. Um, and then for us in San Angelo right now, that corridor doesn't go south of San Angelo on two seventy-seven, that little segment's not picked up. So we're going to have to do some extra work there to, you know, to find the money for it. Currently that segment goes over to Eden and ties in down at Junction, right? That's where their, that's where their priority is on that. And you see some work going on there because of that, so.
Well, that's the eighty-three, eighty-three thing.
Correct.
That takes you on down to I ten to Corpus Christi.
But fortunately for us, Nor, San Angelo North, it picks up on our corridor. And we, and, but, and, but what does that mean? It means that, uh, Abilene has a little bit of segment south of Big Spring that, uh, that needs to be four lane divided, and they're, they're currently planning and doing that. Now granted, the district is working at doing some planning work to see if we can get it to a future interstate standard too, which is what we're asking them to do. Uh, Lubbock, you get up north of Lubbock, then all our stuff's already four lane divided. So Steve doesn't have any, you know, he's not going to get any extra money to do that. Uh, the Midland Odessa people were upset because that one fifty-eight didn't get picked up on that key corridor. Well, the reason why is if you drive one fifty-eight to Midland and you drive three forty-nine north of Midland to, to Lamisa, it's already four lane, not divided some of it, but it's four lane. So it won't qualify for that key strategic funding, uh, that the text out is currently spending because they're trying to upgrade to four lane divided standard. So we're going after other money though, planning particularly, to get us into that, that segment.
Ma'am?
Yes, Tom, Tommy, you'll be next.
Thank you, ma'am.
I want to have another conversation. We don't have time today.
Okay.
But, um, do you have cards you can give us?
I do, yeah. Actually, I actually, I said, man, they're not going to want my card, but anyway, I just tell you this card. I do, I'll get some.
Okay.
Tommy, I'll get some.
Okay. Thanks, Lauren.
Be glad to, follow up, if you have any questions, folks, come here, call, I'm glad to talk to you about it.
Larry?
Since the route hasn't been identified how it's going to impact San Angelo, we have one major project and we're thinking it's going to be just incredible, and that's the rail port. I'd like to know thoughts on the integration of the rail port to, uh, the proposed I twenty-seven.
I think that's important. I think, uh, I think you need to, we need to figure out a way to, to create access from a future interstate into your rail port. Uh, that same conversation's happening in Laredo this week, I mean, excuse me, Eagle Pass this week. I've got to speak at a summit, uh, in a couple of days, and they, there's a Puerto Verde, where they're doing a, they're doing a summit, I mean, they're doing an actually similar thing. They're moving, we're using rail to move product across the border, uh, from the south side to the north side. And part of our conversation needs to be, how does our future twenty-seven need to tie into that rail yard, right? That's, that is, that's an important question. I think you need to, you know, y'all need to spend time planning that and thinking about how you can take advantage of how your interstate can connect to your, your rail port.
We brought up the rail port, um, two weeks ago when I was down there for the Transportation Commission meeting, uh, the importance of our, because most, many of the people on the commission are not aware, certainly Alvin is, about the rail. And there text dot is over, or Alvin on transportation is over rail as well.
And text dot has a division, freight, freight multimodal, and Caroline May's oversees one of those, that's one of the divisions she oversees, which, you know, Caroline, Caroline used to work for me, by the way. So I do know, you know, that that's, that she has been, uh, they've, they've emphasized that we cannot forget about aviation and rail and, and waterway. You know, we, text out owns a waterway, you know, they manage a waterway too. People don't realize that, but the Gulf Intercoastal is under text dot's responsibility to manage too, so.
And Carolyn knows that anytime she needs us to, um, come to Austin to speak towards the issues and the needs, to call. So we've worked really closely with her and she has a passion for San Angelo.
I think your rail thing's great. I'm kind of passionate about that too. You know, I was a district engineer in Odessa for ten years and that rail ran through my district at the time. And I was trying to figure out, how can we spend, how can we spend money to get, you know, improve this rail? Because it's got potential. I guess you can thank Rob Janelle for that, I guess, so.
Any further questions or comments? Lauren will have business cards and, um, opened to conversations and questions.
You don't, you don't need time.
You don't. It's got an expiration date. I think you should appreciate it.
I've got, I got them.
Thank you.
Come back and visit us again.
Lauren, thank you very much for being here today. We are going to move, uh, item B further down the agenda. Um, there's a problem with the PowerPoint, so we'll get that corrected. Meanwhile, we'll move into item C, consider approving request for funding from the infill empowerment zone program for infrastructure funding up to fifty percent of costs for utilities and other eligible project costs and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents and agreements. John, you're on.
Thank you. John James.
Item one is a request for infrastructure funding for a sewer line and related costs in an amount not to exceed thirteen thousand one hundred and twenty-five for property located at six nineteen West Avenue V.
Thank you. John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. And if you're wondering why there's a, you know, a C and then a one under it, there were actually two projects that were moving forward under this same program, so we had a one and a two. Uh, one of those asked to be delayed, um, and so, uh, we just have one coming today. Uh, but this is, as you mentioned, a request for infill infrastructure funding. This is on Avenue V. You can see here, it's a little hard to see the colors, but the, the green lines here are sewer and the, the blue lines are water. And you can see the property there in red, um, on our current maps here, it's sort of in a donut hole and there were no sewer lines to that property. Uh, and so, uh, this property owner, uh, came in to extend the sewer line to be able to serve that property, uh, and has, is requesting funding under the, our infill program, which allows up to half of that sewer line cost to be, um, provided with that infill funding through the city. Uh, the total cost of his project was twenty-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, so half of that is thirteen thousand one twenty-five, which is his request. Uh, as of today, the available funding, you all set aside about two hundred thousand a year, uh, for that infill program. We've got about ninety-three thousand eight hundred, uh, currently available in that program. Uh, and so there's, uh, plenty available for this project. I think that's it for that. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Any questions for John on this project?
Does it, John, does it, when you put it in there, will it service that whole triangle? So anybody that does any development on that?
That's a good question. I know the, the applicant is here, he may be able to answer where that line was actually run.
Just as concerned as you put it in, it'd be great if it would service, looks like one line could service all three parts of that triangle. We don't need three. I don't know.
You would hope so, design that way.
Now, you can see the, these properties all can be served by this line over here. Uh, so I don't know that, I don't know exactly where the line was run, but, uh, just a line that would serve that property would be sufficient. Um, but again, the applicant may be able to answer more detail about where it was, where it was extended.
Were there questions or comments? Sorry, I ate my microphone.
This is in my district, so I'll move to approve it as presented.
I'll second that.
By Lucy, any public comment?
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Yeah, it, does this, uh, benefit anyone else besides that one property owner? Does it affect anyone else?
Let me, the-
Or is this just to the benefit of one?
Let me just make this comment, Larry. Typically in our infill program, for example, in the projects in the other districts, we were allowing five thousand dollars per piece of property, per home for infill development. So if you did three houses at completion, you got fifteen thousand. So this particular request is for fifty percent of the cost of the sewer line, and the question mark is for how many property, how many, is it for one house? Is it two houses? What is it? Because the request for maximum thirteen thousand is certainly more than the five thousand allowed in our other infill districts.
Yes. I'm, I'm, I'm the property owner, my name is Ralph Field, I'm from, Ralph from Brunnion.
Speak into the microphone so we can hear you better. Thank you.
Uh, my name is Ralph from Brunnion. Uh, I live at twenty-one thirty La Cruz in this same neighborhood. I've been here all my life, small business owner. And, uh, when the opportunity arose to build a home to beautify the south side where I'm from, which I plan on doing, uh, didn't recognize that there was no sewer line to this property or even the city engineer. So went ahead and drew it up and, and had the pipe put in, so. Uh, and it's just for one, one home. So, uh, I mean, it's just, uh, on my budget, you know, it went over thirty thousand, actually, thirty thousand seven hundred and fifty. But that's why I'm asking for half. You know, realized that the city could kind of help me out a little bit on this, so that's why I'm here today. And recuperate some of the cost. You know, it's my first home and I'm trying to beautify the south side. That's where my next other project will be also. But, you know, didn't recognize there was no sewer line.
You own the properties, um-
Yes, ma'am.
-around there as well, but they have sewer line?
Yes, ma'am. This is the only one property that didn't have sewer. The developer back in the day, I guess, never ran the sewer.
The conversation is, why does the existing sewer line that, that, um, is available for the, the other part of that triangle, but you can't connect from that sewer line to that property?
Uh, no, ma'am, because it actually runs, where that blue line is, it runs on that block.[1670.15] block. And there was, there's homes there, so I couldn't, you know, go through their properties. So, we actually had to put it on the side of the curb on that property. Yes, ma'am.
I don't know the zoning on this. Has there ever been a septic tank installed?
It would have been back, back when, back in the day.
Is that an answer to this problem?
The septic system requires an acre property in order to put in septic within the city. I think I'm answering this correctly, but correct me if I'm not. So, you can't do septic if you're on less than an acre within the city limits. John, is that correct?
Well, it depends. If you have public water, as this property does, you can actually go down to a half acre if you meet the soils, conditions, and things. But, but you're right in general. And we actually don't like to see septic. Our, the city's preference, especially in a built-out area like this, would be to have it served with, with the sewer system. So, I think the city is supportive of running sewer to properties like this. And if the property owner is willing to, to do that, I think we, we are supportive of assisting with that, with this infill funds, which were specifically for areas like this.
What is the size of the lot?
I couldn't tell you. Those, I don't know if you do know the size.
It's 100, it's 150 by 170. It's that whole red area.
And that equates to how much acreage?
Get a calculator out.
Twenty-five thousand acres.
Oh, can't be 25,000 acres.
Thousand square feet.
Divided by.
Keep, keep in mind-
Half an acre, 0.58 acres.
Keep in mind that, that the project's completed and done with the sewer and hole and everything.
The project's already done?
Yes, ma'am.
Do we typically ask for the money before we do the project? I mean, it-
Yeah, that's the more typical approach. In this case, the, he went ahead and did it. That doesn't necessarily create a problem. Again, it's typical to ask for the money. But usually, that's because they may, you know, if they don't get the money, maybe they won't do it. In this case, he, he was going to do it anyway, but is, is seeking this assistance. I'll add a, a comment about your comment, Mayor, about the $5,000. The infill program, as you saw in your packet, we have two different programs. One is the $5,000 per lot. And that's an easy, you just come in and ask for it and you build the house and you're done. But there's the second program, which you can ask for up to 50%. And we've had a number of projects that have done that, partly because they were asking for more than 5,000 per lot. So, we have funded similar projects to this where they did receive more than $5,000 per new house.
But many of those were done because there was more than one residence that it was going to service. So, there's a difference there.
That's right. Yeah.
Any other questions at this point? Any public comment, further public comment? There's a motion and there is a second. We'll take a vote. Larry? I couldn't hear you, sorry. Karen?
Aye.
Lucy?
Aye.
Harry?
Aye.
Tom?
Aye.
Tommy?
Aye.
Mayor Gunter, aye. Motion passes seven zero. We will move on to item D, first reading and public hearing of an ordinance approving the abandonment of two unimproved alleyways and one unimproved street, Rio Grande Street in blocks five and eight, Roslin Place addition between Mills Paul and Guthrie Street and Sherwood Way and San Antonio Street. John, you're on.
Thank you. Again, John James, Director of Planning and Development Services. This is McGill Elementary School. And you can see the entire block there. They, they basically take up the entire block, but it was platted in the past with street rights of way and alleys. I think we have a better showing of that here. So, you can see, that was actually platted with, with lots and blocks for residential development. And all of those lots and alleys and streets exist in terms of the platted legal property lines. And so, that basically, they just want to clean that up, replatted all as one lot, get rid of the alleys and the street right of way. You, you can see they're keeping a couple of easements for some of the utilities that run through there. But basically, that's what they want to do in, in order to proceed with some development of new buildings on the site, which they can't do right now because they would, those new building expansions would extend either over those street rights of way or the alleys. So, staff is supportive of this request. We did send out notices to the surrounding property owners, received four in favor and no one was against it. Staff does recommend approval with a few conditions. These are just our standard conditions of getting approval of the replat, paying the fee, getting a quick claim deed from the city, and then ensuring that the existing utilities are addressed within an easement that would replace those alleys. This did go to the Planning Commission. They recommended approval unanimously, six oh. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does council have a question on this item from anybody? Then, do I have a motion?
Motion.
Karen made a motion, seconded by Lucy. Any public comment concerning this item? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes seven zero. Rick, are they ready? Okay, so we'll move to consider authorizing the city manager to apply for a grant with the United States Department of Agricultural Forest Service for reforestation and bank stabilization of the North Concho River on City Park property from Oak Street to Bell Street, authorizing the city to match funds for the project in the amount of 4,668,327 and authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute all related documents. Carl, you're on.
Yes. Would like to present some strategies we have for addressing the bank stabilization from where we finished the project in 2013. Our, our strategy includes an application to the USDA Forest Service for a grant. Part of this item here is to authorize the city manager, should we be successful with this grant, to execute any related documents. Also, to approve the city's application. We have already submitted the forms, but we need that application ratified by city council. And then also, we need direction from city council in terms of the matching city funds for this grant.
Just to clarify a little bit on that, we went ahead and submitted it.
I think we kind of hopefully explained that, but there was a very short turnaround on this one. It was a two-week window of opportunity. So, typically, we would bring those things to council first. In this case, we didn't have the time for that. So, if you choose not to approve this, then we will withdraw the application.
A quick-
What's the requirement for matching?
It's about four and a half million, but it's in the presentation.
Yes, but this is public. Yes.
Yes. A quick look at the, the location. We're talking from along the Concho River, from Johnson Dam, down river to the impoundment at Bell Street. The scope of the project is stabilize the bank along city property, along the river. The total anticipated project cost is just over nine million. The amount requested of the grant is just over four and a half million. The city match for this grant is about 4.6 million. We have already hired Freezing Nichols to do the preliminary assessments for this project. The next step would be to do the design work and coordination of the conditional letter of map revision, which involves the, the flood maps.
Carl, hold right there a second. Just so you know, y'all allocated funding a while back to do some river improvements on stabilization and hotspots. So, the, the work that's being done on the design right now is through funding that you did in the past, which I would point out is one reason it allows us to take advantage of opportunities like this, because you've put some money forward in planning and we were able to say, hey, we've got plans ready to go, basically. So, go ahead.
And then the, the following steps would be construction, construction administration, and the, the letter of map revision for the flood maps. A quick look at what we did for the previous bank stabilization. And I show this to illustrate two, two situations which we're dealing with in this project. So, we have locations where we have a high angle of the bank along with erosion, in situations where we don't have the opportunity to sculpt some of the land to provide a lower slope, we come in with higher bank stabilization. And then in situations where we have a little bit more land, we go ahead and sculpt that land at a lower angle and place bank stabilization riprap on the lower end, closer to the river. These are existing conditions back, these are images from February of this year, back behind the funeral home, where we have significant bank erosion.
Well, with saying that, when you say we have significant bank erosion and we've budgeted for bank erosion and stabilization, why hasn't that been done already?
We have not budgeted for, I mean, we've budgeted for little spots to prep. So, the design work on the, the front end was to do some work starting downtown. And that's the work that we hope to actually do with some of the remaining dollars. We hit the hotspots to stabilize those big, those areas where you had erosion. But the other was to go ahead and design that bank stabilization all the way to Bell. So, yes, we do have a little bit of money that you've allocated in the past, which could be allocated, would be utilized for the stuff starting downtown, moving east, but not anywhere close to being able to stabilize the banks all the way to Bell Street.
When would we be notified when we, if we get this grant? What's the timeline?
That'll be in here, but it'll be later this summer, early fall. So, pretty quick is what we're thinking.
Because what I'm very nervous about, if we do get some heavy rains, is there's some areas where the bank stabilization got so bad it, it fell into the Concho River. So, the cost of the sidewalk and everything else with it became even more than ever anticipated. So, I would hope we're not at a point where, if we don't get this grant, that we have a game plan to make sure that this bank doesn't fall into the river.
We, and that's one reason y'all allocated the funding early on to start the stabilization, which is minor, but to get the plan. The plan is not as simple as just, because we have to meet all sorts of requirements with lowmar, clomar, and all these things that are required. So, that plan gets us there. So, then after that, if you start allocating funds for that, we have the design, we have the stuff, we can, we can bid out to a contractor. We're at that point. But it's not a simple fix overnight.
No, I know it's not. But I also know if it falls into the Concho River, it's a much more expensive prob, problem.
Unfortunately, as the mayor is alluding to, this issue has been happening. And they've, we've made progress on stabilizing the river. But I was mentioning Jean Ryan the other day when she was on council. Jean harped on this constantly. So, it's a long time needing to be done.
Yeah, we can't, got to pay attention.
Continue. We've broken this project, comprehensive project, into three phases. Section one is the one that involves the TCUQ grant that we have. And that's from Johnson Dam to Concho Avenue. Section two is from Concho Avenue down to the crossing near the nursing home. And section three is from there to Bell Street. It's approximately 8,800 linear feet of bank stabilization. The project also includes going back in and providing full irrigation systems for those, those park properties and then doing some adjustments on the trails, especially where we've had to slope some of the banks, and then going in and planting additional trees.
One thing I'll point out is we go through the, the grant. The grant is not for trails. So, this grant is for urban reforestation of natural areas where you have urban forest. And so, and where those are threatened or endangered because of conditions and things that are happening. So, that's why we qualify under this, is primarily about reestablishing that urban forest, reducing heat, those kind of things. And San Angelo is very unique in that we have that that goes through downtown. Not, most cities don't. So.
Look at the cost for section one. It's just under 2 million. Section two, about 4.5 million. And section three, just under 3 million. This is our recommended approach in terms of time. We, if we do get the grant, we would have up to five years. We wouldn't want to push it farther than four years, but this is our recommended approach, to do it in three years.
I just continue to say, let's not let those banks collapse into the river.
I think as long as, I mean, once we have the plans which are in the works now, that could move forward quickly. What is going to be is that you have to allocate those funds. So, if the funds can be allocated, it can be done as soon as possible. If, if you need more time to allocate those funds, then it gives us a little bit of flexibility in far as the timeframe goes.
Just keep saying, bank stabilization is key. We can't lose more of the bank.
I agree. And staff does need direction from council regarding matching funds. Possibilities are, include the ARPA funds, Lake Nazareth account, and half-cent sales tax funds.
Yeah, and Tina's here from finance. Do you have questions about those? Those are the ones-
Do we have to decide today where that funding comes from?
We got five years on that, don't we? You do not. You do have to agree that you're willing to fund that. And the way most of the grants work is those, you know, we pay the cost and then we're reimbursed follow-up. You would just have to say, yes, we're committed to making those funds happen.
I think today, for me, I'm committed to finding those funds, but I don't think today, we've got a budget session in front of us, that we should be making a decision today about where that money comes from. But I think council should decide whether they want to support it. I think there's a desire to do it. But I don't think today's the day to decide where those additional funds come from. We've got a big budget issue coming up and we need to wait for that.
I just want to say for the benefit of council, there is also a fourth option, which is funding this at possibly a little bit lower of a level. Four and a half million is a big chunk, no matter where we take it from. So, just wanted to make that option available as well.
The, the grant request, it has to be for 50%?
Based, based on the grant application, it's that four and a half million would be the city match.
Okay. So, I think what we do today is go ahead and take a vote to proceed with a grant application. Down the road, we'll figure out the funding strategy. If that works for council. Okay, so Larry's making the motion to approve the funding, I mean, the grant application. There's a second by Karen. Is there public comment on this item? We're good. How are you today?
Pretty good. Jamal Shumpert, single member District Two.
Would you pull that microphone up just a little bit so you don't have to-
Bend down for it.
Bend down so much?
I'm opposed to the sales tax, half-cent sales tax fund being used for this, only because does half-cent sales tax funds are supposed to be spent on voter-approved projects and the low to moderate income neighborhoods. And we ain't even spending it on that. So, I think taking money out of those neighborhoods and putting it onto the riverbank might not be the best option. And we do have a general fund and property taxes in which we could pull from. So, in the future discussions, please, please do not include the half-cent sales tax, because there's a lot going on with it right now.
Well, half-cent sales tax can be used for community projects. So, that does, it is in the original language. So, but we're not making a decision today. So, we thank you for your, your comment.
And that, that is my concern, that the affordable housing and other projects that is supposed to be used for, isn't being used completely. So, they're taking money from that to fund other projects like this and other projects for the parks. That's why I don't want to take it from the half-cent sales tax so that we can use all of it in the neighborhoods it's supposed to go to. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Further public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. And the vote is to apply for the grant. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much, Carl. Okay, the next item on the agenda is consider selection of mayor pro temp from June 2023 through May 2025 election. And Heather, I don't know that there's anything to discuss on this. So, we'll just move forward.
I will say, as the existing pro temp, we will pick somebody out that needs to finish their term out, that is very well deserving. I nominate Ms. Lucy Gonzalez.
Now, I second that.
And seconded by Harry. Any public comment? Seeing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Absolutely.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you.
Congrats, Lucy.
The next one is consider appointment of city council members to boards and committees. And Heather, you are on this one, if you want to make a presentation or if there's a slide.
No, there's no presentation. Because there were no changes in the seats of council, you can either leave everybody on their current boards, or if you would like to shuffle, if somebody would like, you know, a turn at a different board or commission, then this would be the time, you know, to make those decisions.
I would like to recommend that we leave the appointees as they are currently unless there is something anyone would like to change up. If not, may I have a motion for approval, approving the existing appointees through the various boards and committees?
I'm with-
Tommy's signaling a yes and Lucy's saying yes as well. Any public comment? Seeing none, hearing none, we will take a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And, all right. So, with that, we are through with the regular agenda. We will move into the closed session. The closed session, executive session under provision of government code Title V, Open Government Ethics, subtitle A, Open Government, Chapter 551, Open Meetings, subchapter D, Exceptions to a Requirement That Meetings Be Open Under the Following Sections. A, Section 551.087, Business Prospect Negotiations Regarding Project New Wave. B, Section 551.072, Deliberations About Real Property Regarding One, the Sarah R. Robertson Survey 178, Abstract 8474, and two, TJ Smith Survey 4, Abstract 5145. Section C, 511.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Hotel Occupancy Tax Delinquencies, and two, Section 551.071, Consultation With Attorney Regarding Professional Agreement With Two Pro Management. At this point, we are adjourned for the closed session. All- At this point, we are adjourned for the closed session. All this meeting back to order. There are no announcements that will be made concerning the executive session, so that means that we will go to the additional follow-up and administrative issues, Part B. Are there any announcements in consideration of future agenda items from anyone? Seeing none, we will then ask for adjournment. May I have a motion for adjournment?
We adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Everybody's on.
We're adjourned.